Good evening. We will call the Monday, January 9th Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please join us for a moment of silence before we move on with our agenda. Thank you. Okay, first up is the agenda approval. I actually would like to move to amend the agenda. You may have noticed we need to add a second public comment time. It was just omitted when I just submitted. So as we historically do, we always have an opportunity for public comment beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting. So this is just adding that second time and response. Is there a second?
Deputies.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Do you still want to say aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, which now brings us to the first opportunity this evening for public comment. There was a sign-up sheet, I believe Harriet, you have that? If you did not sign up, no problem, we'll call from the sign-up sheet first and then we will call from the floor if anyone would like to speak but did not sign up. And we do want to pass on a reminder, if you sign, if you speak during this public comment time, if you're speaking as an individual, we ask for you to please keep your comments to approximately three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you can carry those comments to five minutes. And when you approach the podium, if you'll identify yourself, please, by name and address. And first, we have Mr. Patel. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Drew Patel and I'm representing my family's hotel development and management company, Rocklight Capital, who is involved with the Town Place Suites by Marriott Hotel Development at Milepost 10. I'd like to start off and say that, to this point, we've had a positive experience with all town officials on working on this complex project, the likes of which has not been seen in KDH for thirty-some years. I'd like to focus the attention on KDH's water connection fees of $4,000 per room, which is a bold difference compared to surrounding towns in the nation for similar hotel developments. For example, Dare County, Duck, and Kitty Hawk charge $625 per room, while Paratah County charges only a one-time fee of $7,500. We have developed and currently manage five hotels, and all of them have meter charges totaling no more than $35,000 per hotel, a figure that is more in line with jurisdictions across the country. We understand that the monthly water usage fee, separate to this one-time initial hookup fee, will be variable based upon actual hotel guest consumption. I'd like to remind the Board of the benefits that this new development will bring to KDH, the county, and the state. The hotel would generate annual property taxes north of $150,000, and occupancy sales tax of 12.75% per room night sold. The hotel will create forty-plus jobs, equalling more than a million dollars in wages. Additionally, the hotel will create indirect expenditures within the local community by a hotel guest purchasing retail goods within Outer Banks, which in turn would create more taxes and jobs. This brand is a mid-tier extended-stay hotel with an upper-mid-scale designation that is inferior to the Hilton Garnet Kitty Hawk's upscale designation by Smith Trail Research. The hotel's occupancy and rate, as projected by the independent bank appraiser, is estimated to be below the actual performance of the Hilton Garnet. Therefore, revenue and net profit is below that of the Hiltons. The hotel's footprint on a gross building area per room is smaller than the Hiltons, with an average room size of 430 square feet. Above all else, the Town Place Suites is not on the oceanfront nor has views of the Atlantic. The Town Place Suites sells rooms on a nightly basis through the Marriott Reservation System. The hotel does not allow monthly or yearly lease contracts like multifamily rentals. The profile of a guest is the same as the guest profile at all other hotels in the Outer Banks. There are couples and families visiting Outer Banks for leisure travel. The Town Place Suites is a hotel by all means, and Rocklight is a hotel developer and operator. The underwriting, financing, development costs, and operations are that of a hotel, not a multifamily residential development. I ask the Board to confirm a fair, reasonable water connection fee that reflects a standard hotel room, so we can continue this project on time and on budget. We're long-term holders of our hotels and wish to maintain a long-term relationship here in KDH. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Patel.
Hi, my name is Ratna Patel and from Williamsburg, Virginia. We are developing the Town Place Suites over here, and I would just want to reflect some more from what Drew has said. In addition to what he has said, I would like to shed light on the imbalance of charges between a rental home and the proposed charges for our hotel, which is the impact fees. The average rental home on the oceanfront or around here has six bedrooms with 3,500 to 4,000 square feet and can accommodate about six to fifteen people per night. They are charged impact fee of $4,000 for their houses. Our hotel, which will have 65% of the rooms would be king bed only, and 35% of the rooms will have two double beds, would fit in between two to four people per room. And the total square foot would not be more than 430 square feet. So our footprint is lighter than the rental houses for this area here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Next, we have Audrey Esposito that signed up. Welcome, Audrey.
I'm Audrey Esposito. I live in Southern Shores, but I'm here representing the League of Women Voters of Dare. And we would like to talk about the Equal Rights Amendment. Equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. It is the proposed 28th Amendment of the United States Constitution. The League is requesting a resolution from Kill Devil Hills Commissioners endorsing the ratification of the amendment in North Carolina. North Carolina is one of three states that has not ratified the Equal Rights Amendment. Passing on the Equal Rights Amendment will help guarantee women and men equal protection under the law for the first time in U.S. history. It will set a norm for equal pay and provide a basis for litigation and legislation to extend the same pay entitlements to women as men. It will keep women from being segregated into lower-paying categories in which their contributions are undervalued as compared with those of men. It will allow women to earn salaries equal to men's for equal work. It will assure that victims of sexual and violent crimes occurring in marriage can secure meaningful legal protection. It will fight pregnancy discrimination in the workforce and provide a consistency of protection state to state. We realize that there is much confusion about the Equal Rights Amendment. Therefore, we will be requesting time at your February meeting to inform you further about the amendment and its path to ratification. We are also inviting all of the Commissioners to view an award-winning documentary. It's called "Equal Means Equal." The movie night will be Thursday, January 26th, at Duck Woods Country Club at 6:00 P.M. The League would like you all to be our guests and enjoy some popcorn and light apps and beverages. There will be a cash bar. This film has stirred many to take up the ERA cause. The invitations will be coming shortly. The documentary was directed by Camila Lopez, and it gives an unflinching look at how women are treated in the United States today. She followed real-life stories and precedent-setting legal cases. We see how outdated and discriminatory attitudes inform and influence issues, the various issues that I mentioned, workplace matters, domestic violence, rape and sexual assault, the foster care system, the health care system, and the legal system. Along the way, she reveals the inadequacy of the present laws that we have in place that claim to protect women. And ultimately, she's presenting a compelling and persuasive argument for the urgency of ratifying the Equal Rights Amendment. Today, we are three states short of having the ERA in the Constitution. You could go to www ERA dot N C dot org for more information. I do have some brochures that I could also leave on the back table, and I will hand out to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? All right, seeing no hands, we will move on. But certainly, there is another time later this evening. As far as response to public comment, typically, when someone speaks during public comment about an item that's on the agenda, we'll just address that when we get to that item. So for Drew and Ratna, we'll address that during New Business, item number two. And Audrey, thank you very much. And we can coordinate with you either Mary's not here tonight, or town clerk, but Harriet can help, or anyone in the office about coordinating whether it's time on the agenda instead of just public comment for the February meeting. Thank you for sharing that information and for the invitation. Okay, with that, we will go on then to introductions and presentations. We have one item after that this evening, and it's the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2015-2016 and the Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2015. And Teresa Osborne is here with Doughty and Osborne, CPA. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here this evening to present the results of the June 30th, 2016 Annual Independent Audit. The town received an unqualified opinion on its financial statements, which is the best audited opinion that you can receive, and this is found on pages one and two of your audit report. Additionally, there were no findings related to internal control over financial reporting or over compliance with laws, regulations, and grants, and that report can be found on pages 153 to 154 of your audit report. The report's 154 pages long. I'm not going to go through the whole report with you tonight. I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights for you. I just want to point out that the town does prepare what's called a comprehensive annual financial report, which is a step beyond the basic required financial statements and disclosures. It includes significant additional statistical data that more fully presents the town's financial history and performance. In the general fund, the town's unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2016, was about $9.1 million, and I'm going to round off these numbers, so about 9.1. This was an increase of about $1,320,000 over the prior year. This balance represents 59% of the general fund expenses for the fiscal year. This increase over the prior year is primarily a result of revenues exceeding budget expectations in several categories, along with savings and several departmental expenditure budgets. The town has adopted a fund balance policy which requires a minimum fund balance of 35% of the subsequent year's budgeted expenses. That amount would be about $6,600,000, so the unassigned fund balance of about $9.1 million more than covers this minimum according to your fund balance policy. The tax collection rate on ad valorem taxes was 99.55%, which is an excellent tax collection rate. The town implemented a municipal service district tax and a townwide tax increase last year to fund beach nourishment debt service. This resulted in a transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund of a little under $1.2 million for future beach nourishment debt service. That's because this was implemented a year before the project was actually scheduled to begin and when the first debt was set to occur. In the Water Fund, there was a positive increase in net assets. Operating and capital revenues more than covered operating expenses and depreciation, which is what you want. In the Waste Water Fund, there was a decrease in net assets. Although operating revenues are sufficient to cover operating expenses, it is insufficient to cover all of the depreciation associated with the Waste Water Fund. The town implemented a new accounting standard this year referred to as Gatsby Statement 73. This required the law enforcement officer's Special Separation Allowance Pension Trust Fund to be combined with the general fund. The next new major accounting standard to be implemented will affect the town in fiscal year 18, so we have another year and a half before that's going to affect us. This is going to require the town to recognize the full actuarial liability for its retiree health insurance plan, where we currently only recognize an amortized portion each year. We are continuing to monitor developments on this standard, so that we're going to be ready and prepared to implement this when it's required. Overall, the town ended the year in very good financial condition. I would like to thank the Finance Department for all of their hard work in getting this report together, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have now, or if you have any questions that come up after the meeting, I just encourage you to call me. Happy to help you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions currently? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We also have our Assistant Finance Director, Charlene Allen, here, who's going to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2015. Welcome, Charlene.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is presented to the town of Killable Hills for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. And we also have a plaque behind us that we add each year to that, and they have presented us with the 2015 to add to that. And I would also like to thank the Finance Department for hard work and a good job that they have done with the financial report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly Kissinger, who normally presents that, our Finance Director is not here tonight, but certainly kudos to her and the entire Finance Department. You guys do a tremendous job. It kind of seems second nature each year that we receive this, but the work that goes into it is not second nature to do it. It takes a lot of hard work and diligence and attention to detail, and we have such a strong team that does that. So thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will move on then to New Business. The first item under New Business is a presentation by Planning Director Meredith Guns on revised flood insurance maps.
Good evening. I hope I can be as fast as Teresa, but I don't think I'm going to make that. I will try to move quickly through the slides. I have provided copies of the PowerPoint for the Board, and there are some extra copies in the back, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Are you taking my business? Oh, really. Now I'm going to be nervous because I'm at the podium. I'm fine in my little seat, and now I've got to get the full image. As you have heard and read on many news articles lately that the new preliminary flood maps are out for Dare County. The preliminary flood maps were released for Dare County on June 30th of 2016. Maps were developed by the state of North Carolina in conjunction with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The difference this year, one big difference, is they're all digital. They're not giving paper maps out anymore. So you have to review the digital maps on their website, and the website is NCfloodmaps.com. And you can look up your property. I will tell you, there is one issue with the website. The addresses do not work. It is a North Carolina issue. They used a different geographic locating, and if you type in your address, it probably won't find you. So you actually have to know where you're going on the digital map. So just keep that in mind when you go visit that, and look on the Dare County website and figure out exactly where you are in conjunction to the world, and then you can find it on those maps. A few definitions to help you understand what I'm going to be talking about real quickly. The special flood hazard area is a high-risk area defined as any land that would be inundated with flood, having 1% chance of occurring any given year. It's also referred to as base flood. Flood insurance is required or mandated for structures located in a special flood hazard area. I say that unless you don't have a mortgage, and then you don't have to have anything. Base flood elevation, or BFE, are the projected heights of the 1% flood inundation determined by hydraulic analysis within the special flood hazard area. The flood zones that are in Kill Devil Hills include the VE zone, which is an area with a primary frontal dune. It is subject to the 1% annual flood with the additional hazard of storm-induced velocity wave action. This is the highest level of flood damage and the highest regulatory level for the Kill Devil Hills flood maps. AE is a designated area inundated by 1% annual that has base flood elevations, meaning that it will give you an elevation that's a minimum elevation that you need to build to to prevent a house being inundated by that 1% flood event. AO is also, AE also requires mandatory flood insurance. AO is a special flood hazard area subject to inundation by the 1% annual chance, but the difference is it's based on the depth of the water in that area. And in Kill Devil Hills, those AOs are between 1 and 3. So instead of being a base flood elevation, it's going to tell you how high the water's going to come, from 1 to 3, rather than you have to build it a 4. So it's a little different, but essentially the same thing, it's just in reverse. X and shaded X are areas of moderate or minimal flood hazard, not within a special flood hazard area, and flood insurance is not mandatory. I'll put in there that preferred risk policies are available. You can get flood insurance when you're not in a special flood hazard area, but you're not required to. So the new maps highlighted the changes. The preliminary maps remove a significant number of properties from the special flood hazard area, particularly in Kill Devil Hills. You'll notice that our current VE zone is 546. It will be 226. Our A zones will have 4,300, will have 272. Little better understanding of that is now we have AO zones, so you see that we don't have any AOs in the current maps. We'll have 90. They're on the oceanfront, and they're going to show that there's a rise of water between 1 and 3 feet, rather than being in the VE zone. They're going to be in the AO zone. Again, you can see that our AE numbers, we have 4,396. Currently, in the 2006 maps, we'll have 182 properties total in the AE flood zone. We are going VE, 511. It'll be 266. Shaded X. Shaded X is not within a special flood hazard area, but it's designated a shaded X because it gives a long list of possible flooding events that might happen maybe sometime in the future. It's different than X. We don't have shaded X in the 2006 maps or our current maps. We will have, what we do, 3. We'll have 220. This slide does not show the number of properties we'll have in the X zone with the new maps. So current maps. The blue is AE. The green is VE, and the yellow is X. Remember, X is not the flood zone. It's not the special flood hazard area. Preliminary maps. Blue is AE. That includes all the water there, too, if you can see that. Yellow is shaded X, and green is the VE. The light blue that you probably can't see from there is AO. So what does that mean? It means everything in red on this map has been removed from a special flood hazard area in the town of Kill Devil Hills. So anything you see that's pink is no longer in a flood zone in Kill Devil Hills. So that's fairly significant. What does this mean for insurance? Insurance changes include, town of Kill Devil Hills currently have 4,369 active AE policies and 511 active VE. With the new flood maps, it'll be 114, 77, and 136. So there's also a significant drop in the policies, the insurance policies, which subsequently will affect our CRS ratings and things like that. So the next slides I'm going to show you is why staff's concerned about the new maps and why everybody else is talking about the new maps. Over the past, I picked 10 years, the town's experienced many types of storm events that have produced flooding throughout the town, including hurricanes, nor'easter tropical storms, and prolonged rain events. I'm going to give you some examples of areas in town that commonly flood, give you some historical information, and what flood zone that will be on our new maps. So there was tropical storm Burl, I believe it was in 2009. If you look at the track, it really didn't come that close to us. It ended up skirting us when it was only a tropical depression, but it brought a lot of rain for a very short period of time. South end of town, this is Mustian Street. That's an X zone. This is right around Fresh Pond. That's also an X zone. This is Baum Street, X zone. Hurricane Matthew, we all know was extraordinary, extraordinary event. Almost unfair to put in this slideshow, but I did anyway because it might be the first time this happened, but it may not be the last time that we see an event like that here in Kill Devil Hills. So I think it's important for the consequences to be known. Obviously, it was an extensive rain event. It didn't make the right-hand turn that it was supposed to. Everything I'm showing you is proposed X zone. Obviously, this is Wrightsville Avenue, right behind Fuji Steak. This is Memorial Avenue. This is Martin and Memorial. I'm just giving you a couple of examples. I'm sure y'all saw a lot more, but I didn't want this to last forever. The northeasters. Nor'easters are very common in our winter months. They last three or four days. They cause a lot of rain, and it also causes overwash. This is a nor'easter. This area will be, east of the dune will be in a VE, west of the dune will actually be in an AO zone. This is looking towards the west side because the west side was the side that will now be either AO or X, and in this area, it's an X. This will be an AO zone. But this just shows you the overwash that we do get way down the street. This is near Raymond. I'm showing you this because the maps were made based on a hydrological analysis of our primary frontal dune. And what I'm showing you here is how easily, how fragile that dune is and why that concerns staff, having these maps put X zones so close to the oceanfront with the dune being the Nor'easter, this was, say, nor'easter really, actually, but it was the nor'easter in November of 2010. I don't know if y'all remember that, but it was awful. It rained for four straight days. This is, again, we are on Memorial at, just by St. Clair Street, by the portico. We're near the Goddard Street ditch here. This is the Goddard Street ditch. All of this is the X zone on the new maps. This is Memorial, well, this is Memorial looking toward This is Memorial, well, this is Memorial looking towards the Beach Road. This is on Memorial also, same general area near the Goddard Street ditch. This is Baum Street and Memorial. This is, you can see Captain George's Tower, so you're still near the Goddard Street ditch. This is Wrightsville. Oh, so 2009, pardon. North end of town also floods from rain events and also from ocean overwash. Hurricane Sandy in 2013 caused flooding in both ocean overwash and rain between the highways. Currently, on the, the current maps, the north end of all the way to Raymond is designated a VE zone, or a velocity zone, an area that can get wave action. It will now be an AO just to 12, and then it will be an X zone. That's an X zone. That is, that is on Raymond Avenue. This is also Raymond Avenue. This is on Raymond, right around between Hayman and Wilkinson. This is at First Street. Again, the reason I'm showing you this is the west side of NC 12 is in an X zone. And many of the houses and structures I'm showing you are also going to be in either AO or X on the ocean front. They're not going to be in special flood hazard area. This is Prospect. Downside Irene, we all remember it. I put a little, I went and found some elevation certificates so that I could show y'all what this meant. The, the flood elevation Irene, based on the, the dirt line, first elevation of living space is 12.4, lowest sedratic grade is a 3. It will move from an AE 9 to an AE 4, meaning that most of the area that flooded would be, could be living space on this house. You can see the velocity of the waves that hit this house. This is a first level of living space is at 13.5. The grade is a 3. It's going from an AE 8 to an AE 4. So approximately one foot above the grade, which you really can't see in this picture because it's probably about two feet under that grass, will be allowed to be living space. But they will have to have flood insurance. This is the front of the same house I'm showing you here. First level is a 12, lowest level of storage is 4.1. It's moving from an AE 8 to an AE 4. You can tell that the wave velocity and the wave action took out the entire walls and structure system in that house that would be allowed to be living space. Because it is 1/10th a foot above what the base flood elevation will be in the new maps. So adoption process. I will not go through every step of the adoption process with you this evening. It is a very long process. We have done, the preliminary panels have been issued. They were done on June 30th. The next phase will be a designated 90-day appeal or comment phase. That has not been issued, but we've been told it should be in March or April. After the 90-day appeal, the state and FEMA will take the time they need to do the analysis on all the comments and appeals that they may have gotten. And that is not a designated timeframe that they have. After all of that has been addressed, there'll be a six-month compliance period, at which time you'll be required to have public hearings, at least two. They will not change the maps because your appeal process has already been closed by the time you have your public hearing. So it's important that if you have something to say, you do it during the appeal process. So it's probably 18 to 24 months to get the maps formally adopted by the town. In addition to the maps, you'll also be updating your flood damage prevention ordinance, and the state provides a model ordinance for us to work with. Our options and recommendations. Your options are to accept and adopt the maps as presented and adopt the state model ordinance with minor modifications. This scenario indicates the town's comfortable with the proposed maps and the ordinances and the regulations that are with them. To accept and adopt the maps and modify the model ordinance to require a higher regulatory standard. This scenario implies the town has accepted the maps, but will correct any discrepancies in the maps through a higher regulatory standard in the flood ordinance or the zoning ordinance. There are many options with this option that will take a lot of time to, with the board and a lot of explanation. But that's again, creating the higher regulatory standard outside of the flood ordinance is the zoning ordinance. You can also work in the zoning ordinance, and that would again, be accepting the maps and, and developing a higher regulatory standard. And finally, you can appeal the preliminary maps to the state through which a formal appeal process, which has not started for Dare County, as I said. I handed out the appeal forms. I just want to give the board understanding of what the appeal means. It is a formal objection to the new or revised BFEs, special flood hazard areas, or floodway boundaries in the preliminary data. The appeals are based on data provided by the appellate, appellate that shows that the BFEs are scientifically or technically incorrect. In other words, for you, for the town of Kill double hills to appeal, we will hire engineers and hydrologists to show the methodology technique is scientifically incorrect that was used to create these maps. It is an expensive process. And if all of Dare County's not in it, I'm not sure how effective that process might be. But it is an option that is available to the town, and I don't want you to blow it off just because it might be hard. It is an option. Where do we start and what do we do now? Sash recommendation is to take the following action at this time. It's continue to communicate with Dare County or neighboring municipalities to continue to address the concerns and report to the board with any additional county-wide information that we may have. To hold a meeting of the CRS program for, I said program twice, Program for Public Information Committee to gather more public input for various sectors of the community. Our committee includes Willow from Outer Banks Home Builders, Skip from the home builders, and as a contractor, we also have engineers, realtors, insurance agents, bank officials, and citizens. And Brandy is also on there, not only as a commissioner, but as the older adult services director. And bring those opinions back to the board as to what they think about the maps, what the town should, you know, think about in, in reviewing those from different sectors of the public. And finally, staff recommends reporting back to the board when the appeal period begins. Again, that would probably be March or April. And provide written reports about meetings with communities focused on the preliminary maps and model ordinances. To keep a pulse on what the other towns and the counties are doing, if there's a united front, if there's a way that we're all going to come together. The, the staff would want to tell the board about that immediately and have y'all take that into consideration. Technical questions and things of that nature. I will tell you that tomorrow night in this building, in this room, from 5 to 7, the North Carolina Emergency Management, which are the people that develop the maps, Dare County and Kill double hills planning department will be here to discuss the development of the preliminary maps, the approval process, and allow owners to check what flood zone their property, they will be in, under the preliminary map so that they have an idea of what the maps will do for or to them. So that's tomorrow night from 5 to 7 in this room, and we would love for you to attend. And I will answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Questions?
I have one. Does that have anything to do with the situation with the flood? Does our town calendar say it's 4 to 8 tomorrow? I thought it did.
It's 5 to 7. Well, that's how it's been advertised. The county's done advertising. Mary's also done advertising. It's on our Facebook page. It's 5 to 7. The room might be reserved from 4 to 8, but it's 5, 5 to 7 is when everybody will be here. There's going to be a short presentation. When I say short, he said it's five minutes or less. It's more going to be, come, ask questions and look at the new maps digitally. We'll have the computers up, and we'll have several maps around the room to assist the citizens.
Yeah, there's a lot of this stuff that we'll have to bone up on. It looks mighty right now, I guess I could say. But I know, I know in the past you guys have always helped us out on this kind of stuff, and I'm looking forward to asking you a lot of questions.
Thank you.
So Meredith, I'm sorry. If, if we're projecting out the, the time when it's really going to become, or the timeframe where the board's really going to have to, I guess, make some decisions is, it's, it's the timeframe where we have to hold the public hearings, but we need to have our plans before that point. Is that correct? So whether we are...
For the maps, if, if this board is very, very interested in appealing the maps, they will only be appealing for the town of Kill double hills and not for the entire county or any other town. We would need to move on that rather quickly because of the studies that will be involved that you have to submit within that 90-day period. Again, that 90-day period will start in March or April. Once the appeal period is over, that means the maps, that we've accepted the maps for what they are. It doesn't change, it does not limit our ability to work in our ordinances for as long as we need to, to get our ordinances established that the, the board is comfortable with and feels like it will protect the town and the citizens to the best of our ability. We'll be able to do that after the appeal period closes. That's not part of the appeals. The appeals are purely based on the hydrological data and methodology that was used to create the maps. And if you're challenging that methodology, the model ordinance will be able to work with. But we will have to have that done by the time the public hearings are held sometime in that six-month compliance period. We'll have to have our model ordinance complete and available for those public hearings.
So I, I think, thank you. The big discussion at some point soon this board will have to have is whether or not you want to appeal. Certainly, I think anyone looking at those maps know that the preliminary maps do not reflect the high propensity of flooding that's likely in our town with the different, with the different events. That being said, taking into consideration the cost, the likelihood of we going to get them changed and redone versus being able to mitigate against the risk of people not carrying flood insurance based on whether they have to by the map and our building standards, those could be, those risks could be mitigated through ordinance and changing that model ordinance from what the, from what's represented or presented back to us. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
Correct.
You, you're correct.
So I, I guess it's, I don't know at what point we're going to have that discussion. I think my recommendation is give you guys some time to further digest this, attend the meeting tomorrow night, get more information. But it is going to have to be a conversation that, that we have sooner rather than later, at least to determine whether we're appealing or not. If we, if we don't appeal, doesn't mean that we agree, but it may mean that we're choosing to address this and deal with it through ordinance, either changes or however we adopt that versus fighting to get the maps changed. Makes sense to everyone?
And I'm happy to talk to anybody who wants to come by the office and really dig into.
Is the negatives at this point that we'd potentially be allowing building or living space where we currently don't allow it?
There's a lot of pros and cons to this, and really quickly, this was a slide that I took out because it was wordy, but I'll be quick, I swear. The pros are that people won't have to carry flood insurance. It's a cost savings. They won't have to put as much fill on their property. It's a cost savings. The cons are they don't, these maps don't reflect our reality. Very simply, they don't reflect the town's reality when it comes to storms. It will allow buildings to be constructed significantly lower than current regulatory even slabbing grade on the ocean front to areas that we know flood and could lead to more widespread damage. When those properties that are in an X zone that we know flood, and they don't have to put fill in, and they can put living space on the ground level, and they're not carrying flood insurance, and they get flooded, they have no recourse. They can't, there's no one coming in to help them. They're done. So what does that do to second homes where people can't afford to spend that kind of money to rehab a flooded house? You know, what are you, what are you setting yourself up for as a town in the future if, you know, plus you'll be getting the calls as to why aren't you fixing the water? When we know that that area floods. Preferred risk policies are available. People will not, can, do not want to or won't buy them because they don't know about them. We're going to do a major campaign on preferred risk policies for all these properties moving into the X zone. They do get them. It, it's the likely of a rental house that's a second home or is simply a rental house, getting a preferred risk policy is probably not that high. Again, I said something about our CRS rating. It really could affect our CRS rating a lot so that those people that are still required to get flood insurance aren't going to get the discounts that they're getting now because we're not going to have as many insurance policies. And one of the major grades you have on that, I showed you the insurance policy quote, is we're dropping by to a quarter of what we have now. Last sort of is that when they find out that the maps don't reflect our reality, and they come back in and they do further analysis, in about eight to 10 years, they send out new maps that put everything back like it was in 2006 or maybe higher. We've got a tremendous amount of non-conforming structures that may have been built. Now, this is hypothesis. Maybe no one will build in the next eight to 10 years. Maybe everybody will build really high because they know that we flood. So it may not be an issue. I'm making some assumptions. You have non-conforming structures, and with the new legislation that deals with our flood insurance for secondary homes, they don't get to pay grandfathered policy anymore. They are moved back up to actials. So if they build it in AE 4 and the new maps come up and they're in AE 8, then over a certain amount of time, those people are going to have to pay to be four foot below base flood elevation if it's not their primary structure or if it's a business. Now, that legislation might change, so maybe they won't, but that would be burdensome for the people of our town. And I'll, that, that, that's, it's not just that it might be living space.
Right. Yeah. I don't want to get that clarified so people could start thinking about that. The, the other piece is we can't supersede North Carolina building code.
Correct.
So we can't require you to be at base plus an elevation, base plus four or something.
That's... Right now, that, that is true, but with your special, with your flood damage prevention ordinance, you can do higher regulatory standards.
So we know we have problem areas. We could potentially take action on that.
Willow, am I right on that?
What's that? If it's, if it is not in a special flood hazard area, then you cannot require above base flood.
But if, okay. Well, there is no base flood.
Right. So there's no... Yeah, you can't say BFE. You can't put freeboard in when you don't have base flood.
Correct. There's different ways to address ordinance changes that if that's the direction the town or the board would like to move in, that will be something that staff will be able to give you a lot more information. And I'm not really prepared to do that. I was just trying to give you the overall, here are the maps. There's some concerns. Want you to be aware of them.
No, this is good. Thank you.
So yes, big, big item for future agenda and multiple agendas, and possibly just a standalone. and possibly just a standalone workshop as well the board might need to do. But I think we'll, let's gather more information. Meredith is available for one-on-one meetings.
And continue to work with the other municipalities in the county really will help keep a pulse on what everybody else is thinking, which will make it easier to report to the board the direction that it's always better as a county that we try to sort of keep things.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you again for all the information. Next item is item number two under new business. And this is recommended revision of water initial hookup fee schedule. If you recall at our December meeting, Eddie Goodrich came and spoke on behalf of the proposed Marriott Town Suites about us looking into revising the fee structure for the initial fee hookups. And I'll turn it over to Debbie. She can refer information for us to review and discuss this evening.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm actually gonna ask Steve Albright if he will come up. I'm having a little bit of an issue. I don't wanna cough through my presentation. But Steve and myself and other members of the staff, along with the town attorney, did work with, work on this at Eddie's request. And I'll let Steve walk through what we were recommending.
Thanks, Steve.
Good evening. And I'll start by the guy responsible for cleaning up all the carpet and flooded furniture and everything recent on my mind. After our recent hurricane, I urge you to do all you can to try to keep that flood elevation where it is. Because if it gets lowered, that's more stuff at the curb and more cost, more mess. So I'll start with that. Regarding the fee for the hotel motel units, since I started in 2002, I don't, it's something that was adopted in the budget every year and just kept going forward. Hotel motel with the one initial hookup fee for habitable unit and one per three for the standard hotel. And we worked with Mr. Goodrich. He didn't understand the meaning of the habitable. And the historic thing passed down from me from the predecessors and the staff is that habitable, the one-to-one was, that included cooking facility. If you had a hotel that had a full kitchen, you're getting real close to a one-bedroom condo apartment. And to keep things equitable, if you charge the $4,000 for a one-bedroom condo, you would charge the $4,000 for a hotel that had that same physical improvements, the kitchen, you know, the range. And so that's the history of it. We looked at the floor plan. We looked at what NAGZED does. NAGZED does the one to two and they allow their hotel rooms to have the cooking facility. Now, NAGZED's impact is $3,000, whereas it's $4,000. But we talked about that and the consistency. And I didn't wanna lose our current wording, which is one to three for a standard hotel without the cooking facility and just make everything one to two. So we looked at breaking it down. If you have, again, the physical, a bedroom and a full kitchen and you rent it as a hotel room, we didn't really wanna analyze how it was being rented. It was the physical improvements were basically the same as a condo or apartment. So stay with the $4,000 for that unit. The ones with the efficiencies in the cooking, follow NAGZED model one to two. So they get a 50% reduction for those. And then leave in the one per three for just a standard hotel room that doesn't have the kitchenette. And that's generally what we tried to present to you with A, B, and C.
Questions?
So in this scenario, hypothetical, if it was a town being built, if we adopt what you suggested right there, how would that change their fees? For kind of an example, so easier to understand.
Yeah, the grand total, I looked at that. The grand total of the fees currently that went to the, with the packet information to the planning board, to the board of commissioners that y'all approved it by, I believe with the credits for the existing is around $544,000. With the proposed language that you have before you, that they have 12 suites that have a one-bedroom unit that basically is their largest rooms that is very similar to a one-bedroom apartment. So if you capture those 12 suites at the one-to-one, because they have a separate bedroom and the kitchen, and then the remaining 140 at the one to, per two units, because they have the kitchenettes, they don't have any standard hotel rooms that you think about with no kitchen facilities. Plus all their other development, the restaurant, and you get to a total, it reduces with the proposed language from $544,000 and change to $261,000 and change, or savings of $282,000 with the proposed language. And I did some other looking, you know, capacity charges for this type of development, Kill Devil Hills, they are on the wastewater system, the KDHWTP. It had to purchase capacity for 34,750 gallons at a grand total wastewater impact fee to here of $451,055.
So how are you relating that to the?
I don't think that our fees are out of line in our market, if you look at water wastewater.
Right.
These fees are needed for the capital improvements. We still have 19 miles of asbestos cement lined replace. We've got a 1960 vintage elevated tank that needs a replacement. Got older ground storage tanks and all of those additional capacity down the line.
Are you comfortable with this proposal?
I am. I think it's, I think it's fair. It adds some clarification to the categories, provides a significant reduction and gets us more in line with what NAGZED is doing.
Very significant savings, I think. It's still a big number, but to me it's a giant. It's a big savings.
Okay, comments or questions?
I mean, I like the clarification. I mean, it almost, Mike, it seems like a large number. But I mean, it's also a fairly significant site. So we're looking at 152 rooms total. Is that where we're at? And currently, if you built a condo, like something like the Seven Seas where you're having nine units, that would be nine times the $4,000. So that would be.
Just like the first site retreat, they had to pay the $4,000.
Yeah, again, we don't look at how it's rented. We look at the physical and try to be equitable.
The fact that this is before us is, you know, we haven't had a new hotel. We haven't had a suite or anything with a kitchenette. Really haven't had anything in 20 years. So the budget ordinance that's in place just hadn't been looked at to try to address this. So I know when Eddie came before us back in December and that the hotels raised a concern, I think it was appropriate and is appropriate for the board to look at this in light of just what's happening and the potential in the market. I know at our last meeting when we talked about this in response to public comment, it seemed like there was consensus that the, that the development, the hotel rooms were not the standard traditional hotel room. But yet, I think there was agreement too that these didn't seem to be the same, carry the same weight as a single-family dwelling. And so that's where the board had interest in looking at this. I think in reviewing it in the bigger context of what we have going on in Kill Devil Hills with our resources, the improvements we're putting into our water system, our overall water master plan that we adopted and all of those infrastructure improvements and then ongoing maintenance with that, I think to Steve's point, it's fair. The discussion really isn't about per se what dollar amount we charge that NAG, as compared to NAGZED charging as compared to another entity because they don't have the same structure and they don't have the same system, so to speak. And, you know, we're unique, so to speak, when it comes to towns, we're different than the next or the next entity. So I think from my perspective in looking at this, we wanna look at something that's fair, that's taking into consideration, let's update our ordinance, but that also is very mindful of town-specific requirements and commitments that we're making.
And just for clarification, typically our impact fees are used for infrastructure improvements or changes, not necessarily directed at that particular site, but town-wide, right?
Impact on the system.
Impact, right. My assumption would be that on the wastewater side, it would be the same type of thing, that it was $451,000. That's not necessarily just for this site. It would be potentially for other impacts as well.
You had to respond to that if you want me to.
I'm curious.
The, first of all, my name is Eddie Goodrich. My fees are mandated by state of North Carolina. I don't have a choice. The Division of Environmental Policy tells me which numbers, how many gallons to the design flow to appropriate for each room. And they tell me what to charge per gallon, $1.98. So I really don't have any choice whatsoever. And in regards to the capacity fees that I charge, that's to recover. There are two ways, we build two ways. One is a capacity fee to recover the money that we've spent to build a wastewater treatment plant. The second fee that we charge is a consumption fee. That's based on water consumption. It's a meter grade. And again, both of those numbers are mandated by the state of North Carolina. So the capacity fees are to, is return of capital investment in a treatment plant. And quite frankly, the town that owns that, you buy water from the county and resell. I might go into further with that. That's just the way it is. That's the way it is, Steve, for that matter. In regards to our consumption rates, you know, and the same thing is gonna happen with this hotel. If they use more water, they're gonna get a bigger water bill. It's that simple. So quite frankly, by having the kitchenettes, and if they do use more water, you're gonna send them a bigger water bill. So forgive us if I'm late. There's still other hotel rooms you can recover.
To Travis, I think your point, and it takes in, part of what Eddie said is that, yes, when you're looking at the consumption, you're gonna get a water bill for that. But when you're looking at the investment in capital and improvements and the maintenance of those improvements to our system, that's the impact.
Right, and it tends to be similar thought on each side. That's sure.
If I may say one more thing, the way the utilities commission, what they require us to do is prove to them a revenue requirement. We have to prove to them, this is what it costs to operate this plant. This is what it costs to build. And that's again, what they call a revenue requirement. And they take the revenue requirement, they allow us to make 8.25%. That number changes, depends on how well you operate it or how well you don't operate. And the revenue requirement is what you have to prove to them, what it costs to operate it, what it costs to build it. And, you know, everything that he does and everything that we do, it costs more than they do. But we were all under the impression that it was one-three. The engineers were, the architects were, and maybe we, the ordinance was a little vague because it's, you know, it gets into habitable rooms and everything's habitable, or you couldn't rent it. But I just ask you to do what you think's fair.
And if I, if I may say, I understand his point about kitchen and his comparing to a condo, one-bedroom condo. One-bedroom condo maybe over here is not only 430 square feet, it's more than that. It can occupy more people. And we feel like this is a standard one-room and that's how we came in town looking at this ordinance, thinking that it's a one, one per three, whatever that ordinance is. Now, if we had known this, we would not have come here at that point because we did not have this big number of 280,000 or 500,000 in our budget to do a hotel here. Also, if you go with this proposal, I think you will miss other opportunities of other development in this town at this magnitude or this kind of hotel. NAGZED has that, but nobody has built a hotel in NAGZED. Yes, I am looking at a location for, to do another hotel in NAGZED. But before I do that, I'm gonna definitely make sure that I'm gonna talk to the town commissioners that this is a high number. If not, we might walk away.
I guess I respectfully disagree on the level of occupancy earlier. You indicated it could be occupied about the four people. I don't think we'd expect more than four people in a one-bedroom condo. So I think your usage and everything is, and your physical improvements, as I stated earlier, are very consistent.
So the fee for a single-family home is?
$4,000 unless it, these large oceanfront homes?
That's what I was gonna ask you about.
Are on a two-inch meter, so they pay an up-charge for the two-inch meter. So it's more, it's more like triple that. It's more like a $12,000.
So they're now, you're paying three times what I know, right? If I built a house where I live.
Yeah, they're paying, on the adaptive fee schedule, per the meter size for anything over the 5/8 by 3/4.
Brian, did you have, I said Brian, did you have something?
From my side, I just wanted to point out that the town's interpretation to charge one impact per one room was part of the packet that went to the planning board and the board of commissioners and was approved by the board. So this wasn't something that came up when the applicant applied for building permit, that this is what water impacts are gonna be charged. It was part of the packet throughout the process. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone. Wasn't a surprise.
Recommended by the planning board to us that we adopted, so, right. Any questions for Steve?
This is basically gonna cut their bill in half if we adopt this.
That applies to anything in the future too.
I was gonna say, even though right now what's driving it is the request from this particular site or property. But it is an ordinance change that then becomes for anything in the future.
And the staff feels that it's fair, that it's reasonable for future development as it's been clarified here.
And I hope the additional language in there prevents any future engineers or developers from making the mistake, you know, that it's three to one or one to three. It's spelled out in there now, what's, what's what, a standard hotel, the three to one.
Yeah, when Eddie first spoke and he told us what the fees were gonna be, I was like, son of a gun. You know, I'm crazy, but it was, it's a big number and compared to.
It's all, it's all big numbers.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand. But I think this is a good. But I think this is a good compromise.
If we were ready to take action, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment to the water initial hookup fee schedule for multi-family development as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you to Eddie and you guys and the towns for your input, appreciate it.
Next item, we'll move on to commissioners' agenda.
Yeah, I mentioned that maybe not our last meeting, one before maybe, but whichever, that I've spoken to a gentleman from, Joel Moska from Moska Design, who does a lot of Christmas lights you see everywhere, and do the one up in Virginia Beach on the oceanfront and a lot of big ones around Raleigh and some of the big cities. Anyway, we started talking to him first about forty years ago, unofficially at the time, just by doing something with our Christmas lighting. We got a grant from the tourism board to put the electric in, which we did. And then the following year, we requested a grant for the lights that we turned on, which seemed kind of weird. Anyway, I'm trying to resurrect that product and that that development there with the Christmas lights. And I was seeing if the board would mind if Mr. Moska came here and spent ten, fifteen minutes, showed us a PowerPoint display and talked about the costs and options, if you'd all be okay with that. Is there a particular meeting we could, I know we're going to be busy. Budgets, I suppose is part of that too, yes, maybe. So, yeah.
Well, I guess that would be my question is, are you wanting to show the board something so the board's considering that in the upcoming budget discussions? Is this for?
Well, I wouldn't call it that. I would just say that I would, I would like him to explain what we could do and then we can decide if we want to do it. Just like probably anything else we do. No, I wouldn't think it necessarily part of the budget discussion unless there's consensus to move on with.
Like the big upcoming things, but I don't know which meetings that will be in addition to our budget discussions and works that are going to be helping us develop with the flood maps and.
I'll talk to him and see if he can come to our next meeting, the one in February. All right, thanks, guys.
Anything else?
That's all, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Under mayor's agenda, there's one item in your packet, and I also have another announcement, but in your packet is a resolution opposing a petition to designate special secondary nursery areas. The North Carolina Wildlife Federation submitted a petition to, basically they're seeking to designate all inshore and ocean waters out to three miles as special secondary nursery areas. And if this were to be approved, it would have a devastating impact on commercial fishing families and seafood consumers, specifically as noted in the resolution in opposition. The petition is, as they are proposing, would severely limit shrimp trawling, which for our area would be detrimental to our commercial fishing families. And certainly as stated in the resolution, and hopefully you all feel the same, that there are existing state and federal regulations that are providing ample provisions currently for the monitoring and regulation of commercial fishing. So this as proposed is just an additional measure that just seems really unfair to our commercial fishing industry. So with that, I would like to request or make a motion to adopt this resolution. I'll second that. Any discussion, comments, questions?
Is it only shrimp? Or is it because of it being that close to shore, is it, it would be the primary impact?
It specifically talks about type of gear and how you can use gear and references shrimp. But the fact that it's also stating that out to three miles is that special nursery area. I think that could be even greater than that, but it does note in specific. With that, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, just as an announcement, and we'll get information out on this, but Coastal and Maritime Services, the engineering company that's assisting Dare County with the beach nourishment project, Great Lakes Dredge and Dot Company that have the bid, and the town representatives are going to hold a public informational meeting on Thursday, February sixteenth at nine a.m. here at Town Hall. The dredging contractor is going to make a brief presentation followed by a Q and A segment for anyone interested. This is also going to occur in Kitty Hawk and Duck, there's specific dates as well. Basically, this is kind of the, in line with our efforts and desires to have as much communication as possible with the public in advance and then ongoing with the beach nourishment project. So again, this is kind of the, I guess, the first of those sessions, and this one will specifically have the dredge company there, which is great because they're going to be doing the monumental work out there. So again, that date is Thursday, February the sixteenth at nine a.m. here. You all can make it, the public's welcome to attend as well and ask questions. And then if you can't for some reason, make that date, the date in Kitty Hawk, actually it's the day before at nine a.m., so February fifteenth at nine, and they're going to do Duck also on February fifteenth at one-thirty p.m. Again, we'll get information out, this will be on our website. People want more information, but figured sooner that you can get it under your calendar, the better. That's all I got this evening. Debbie?
Yes, ma'am, I did have one item, a manager's agenda, and Chief Troy Tilly is going to present that.
Great, welcome, chief.
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. Dare County Emergency Management was putting together a public information alert system or a mass notification system. Over the past couple of years, we've held table tops with Dare County Emergency Management, and an item that was always brought forward as a need was a mass notification system. It's an item that can be utilized to notify the public, food subscribers for any type of important notifications, like board commissioners were canceling a meeting tonight due to severe weather. And then there's another portion of it that's important to me, and it's i-Paws. It doesn't have to do with dogs, but it is a integrated public alert warning system, which works similar to a Amber Alert, if you remember that, about kids that are missing. We can pinpoint an area and draw an area on a map and hit every cell phone within that geographical area to alert them to sheltering places, to evacuate, or any other type of emergency alert that needed to go out for public safety purposes. So it's a tool that's being put out to all Dare County, and the cost sharing will be based upon population.
I've heard a little bit about this, and I think it's phenomenal. It's my understanding, so the different participating entities, we would have the ability to do town-specific messaging as well as the county could do county-wide messaging. I mean, it really would be tailored per need, per item, with certain people having control to be able to execute those notices.
Yeah, so subscribers for Kedley Hills could put together that into a database, and then they'll be notified for any important things like, like I talked about cancellation of a board commissioner meeting. But that i-Paws thing is very good. We have a vaccination or something like that, like we had a few years ago.
Right, I was thinking when they had it door-to-door with the, on the fire engines and with the loudspeaker, they could have actually just then pinged anyone within that radius with a cellphone and made those announcements that way, which actually would get people's attention far more than, so.
People have to subscribe to it, correct?
To the subscription portion, but the i-Paws just hits every cellphone. And there's certifications that nobody, not just anybody can do those things. There's female certifications where you can be certified to send out i-Paws.
I think this is a great kind of cost-sharing opportunity as well. Similar, this item is on agendas now for the other municipalities as well as the county. So by working collaboratively to purchase and implement the system, it keeps the cost four to, we're guessing four to five thousand dollars annually as compared to, you know, be closer to forty or fifty thousand if you're trying to do it as a single entity.
I think it sounds good.
With that then, can we, is there consensus to provide authorization? Consensus would be appropriate. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else, Debbie?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Town attorneys' agenda, welcome, first off.
Nice to be with you all night. I didn't, I was given no assignment to bring to you that.
Okay.
Just you.
Thank you for being here. Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, just three items on the consent agenda. The minutes from December the twelfth, twenty sixteen, the annual certification of firefighters, as well as the board of commissioners' meeting, date changed in January twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen, to January twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. And we do propose that to be the budget guidance meeting. We are going to be beginning the first year of our two-year budget, and I feel that it would be an opportune time to sit down with the board and just sort of give you a little bit more in-depth information with where we stand and what are some of the things that you'd like to see. So in fact, if Commissioner Hogan's comment about your lighting, if that is a substantial budget item then, and that you'd be looking at doing within the next few years, then it is something that we would want to consider with the budget, I would think. So with that, staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One thing I felt to mention under mayor's agenda, I received an email from one of our citizens. You guys know Ron Seidman, who frequently provides input. And he had shared an email just wanting to pass along his compliments to our police department and the great work that you all do. We really appreciate your service. He also went on to share, especially in times like we're dealing with now, where law enforcement agencies and officials aren't getting the respect that they should and probably the appreciation, and it's a scarier and scarier work environment to be in. So we just wanted to pass on that recognition. So if you will share that with other officers in our department. And we are very, very fortunate in Kedley Hills to have such a great police department. Thank you. Told Ron that I would share that. Okay, anyone have anything else before we?
Just want to thank Debbie for being such a trooper tonight.
Thank you, because it's not on the agenda. Any, we did add to the agenda, we modified it, a second opportunity for public comment. Willin? Great.
Thanks.
Evening, you're sick and you're still on the ball, right?
I wrote it down here. Welcome, Willin.
Check the time. Good evening, my name is Willa Kelly. I serve as the government affairs liaison for the Outer Banks Home Builders Association and the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. I'm a former president of NC20, and the only reason I bring that up is because with discussion earlier on the flood maps, there was actually a meeting that NC20 held in New Bern, North Carolina in April of twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen, when we actually saw a map from John Dorman from the North Carolina Flood Plane Mapping Office. He's the director that was showing base flood elevations going down in Dare County up to four feet. Two thousand thirteen went by, two thousand fourteen went by. We said, when are we going to get these flood maps? This is, as I've said in a prior meeting, actually here in this room, this seems like a gift from the flood insurance rate gods. Because what took place in twenty thirteen with the passage of the Bigger Waters Act by Congress caused homeowners here in Dare County tremendously. It caused those folks that were trying to sell their homes tremendously. When we saw flood insurance premiums up as high as fifteen thousand dollars on a house that was three lots from the sound and was on pilings and was built in two thousand and five. So the NFIP, in my opinion, is broken. The rating system is broken. When Bigger Waters was passed and it was included in the Bigger Waters Act that rates be based on actuarial risk, including catastrophic losses, it caused a tremendous increase in premiums of which people were looking at. We did get some relief in twenty fourteen with the homeowners flood insurance. The homeowners, let me get this right now, homeowners flood insurance affordability act, I think is what the bill was called. And it provided some relief from bigger waters where we saw these tremendous increases in premiums and high rates, whereas some folks in New Jersey and even here, we're looking at even premiums of thirty thousand dollars. And let's make sure we understand that the limit of flood insurance for residential property is only two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Some banks require excess flood, and if you've ever had to buy excess wind insurance, you know what the cost is, even over what just the insurance is, up to two-fifty. So there's problems with the NFIP to begin with, in their rating system and their rating structure. And we're seeing folks, I was told just by the end of last year that we will probably see rates close to twenty thirteen again within the next couple of years. So this gift from the flood insurance rate gods, so to speak, was awesome news for us is that we will see people that will not have to pay so much for flood insurance for their property. We also realize the unintended consequences of that in having these discussions the last almost four years and hearing this good news. We know that there's going to be issues if base flood elevations go down with regards to fill, where you've got one lot left, the lot on either side has been developed, it's been filled to here, now this lot here won't be able to fill to the same level. These are discussions that we will have to have as a community. And let me just say too, that the Outer Banks between Dare County and Currituck County Outer Banks, we're, I think, the only place where base flood elevations are going down. So there's been even rumbling south of here in Carteret County, New Hanover, Brunswick, that somehow we got a favor because of all of the involvement we had in the process. But, oh yeah, we got a favor, okay. These maps, I was told, were developed based on the latest and greatest technology. Alabama, Virginia, other states were looking at how North Carolina developed their flood maps. Typically, the NFIP, when they develop maps, FEMA-developed maps are typically challenged as they did in New Jersey. There's changes made, they go through this whole process through the appeals. We've also seen where the majority of flood losses over the last few years have been in places like South Dakota, North Dakota, West Virginia. They haven't even been in coastal communities, they've been in western North Carolina. So there's a lot of things to be considered here when my concern is you're going to try to appeal these flood maps. I think there's things that we have to have a conversation about on the local level when it comes to what we can do, the unintended consequences. But when I just think about what savings there could be to your constituents because of these base. of these base flood elevations going down, and where we've already started the conversation in the North Beach Sun, I think it was the fall/winter edition, there's a long article in there that I worked with Michelle Wagner to write about, hey, we need to make sure people know, even though you're not required to have flood insurance, you need to keep flood insurance. People need to understand about repetitive losses, what happens when you try to go back into the program when you come out of the program. Again, many unintended consequences. We really need to be clear on what the 1% storm actually is. And Mayor showed a lot of pictures of, I think, heavy rain events, storm events, that were above and beyond the 1% storm event. That 1 in 100 year storm, the 1% chance a year. Hurricane Irene, I don't know, I've heard figures from everything. It was a 500-year event, 700-year event. It was ever and above what a 1% storm event is. But even with that, that level of consideration for the 1% storm event, the rates in the NFIP are just getting astronomical. So there's got to be some way to work this out, that yes, while we've been given this, you know, nobody wants to think of oceanfront development with, you know, slab. We looked at New Jersey and said, hey, that was built in the 50s, 60s, why would you build on a slab on the oceanfront? Well, that's just what they did way back when. I think they should know not to do that anymore. And so I would just plead with you to move slowly. Let's have conversation. Let's have dialogue. Let's talk to insurance people and really understand what's covered and what's not covered when you are looking for a higher storm event to be covered in the national flood insurance program. There are some times when just a heavy rain event, you might have flooding from that and it's not covered. I'm sure there's lots of stories out there from where people have been denied on their flood insurance. But we really need to have a clear understanding of what is involved here. So I would just like to open the invitation to have that dialogue, to have stakeholders meeting. I know Andy Garman from MAGS Head and their planning department, and the deputy town manager has been kind of leading a campaign to get everybody together to really understand the consequences of these maps and how we move forward from here. But please listen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willow.
Let's go.
Yeah, just a quick, quick word after stuff. Well, a lot more than I was going to cover to start with. But first of all, I was at the, on the planning board when the guys from Motel came and presented all their, everything. And we were at the time, we were pretty astounded how much it was going to cost for each room for the connection fees. Of course, that was three, four months ago. I'm also surprised that they're negotiating at this point in the process, which I thought maybe they'd already have a permit by now, excuse me, I'd ask Brian. But anyway, I did think what the commissioners did, I think we did need to look at that code, and I think it was a good decision that you made. I just want to make the point that it seemed a little bit like 11th hour negotiating something that we all knew about and talked about months ago. As far as the insurance, getting moving on real quickly, Mayor, that a question to 90 days, I mean, it seems like they've been talking about for four years, and we get 90 days to talk about it. Is that just 90 days to question their methodology or the outcome? I'm just curious if you know or?
I don't mind if you.
Do you want me to answer?
Are you okay to answer now? I know normally we do a response to public comments, but I don't mind if you're okay with that.
I didn't want to start a dialogue during public comment. The 90-day appeal is the chance if the town or the county or any other town chooses to, that is the window that you can submit your paperwork for appeal. After that, the state and FEMA get as much time as they need to review that paperwork and question your results, and I think there's a little back and forth. But the 90-day is the limit upon which time you can do a formal appeal.
So that's, you're right. That's all the time we get.
But you're only appealing the methodology, or can you?
Scientific or technical hydrological data or methodology used to create the maps.
I mean, as a builder and, you know, like Willow said, I mean, the rates are going crazy. This seems like a good time to me, if it's possible, to negotiate those rates, but still, I mean, I hate to see our town look like, and the other towns are going to be even worse, like Southern Shores will be even worse, where you've got a lot of really low lots left. So, and they're not going to be able, you're going to be building holes, basically. So, you know, it's going to be some pretty, pretty crazy outcomes if we do go by the new flood maps. And I don't think you can put a, well, like you said, if it's not in a flood zone, you can't do a, currently we're doing a one-foot freeboard, but you can do a four-foot freeboard. So, I mean, I just, I think it does.
Everybody's done to respond to it.
Sorry, okay. I mean, I don't think that was understood earlier, that we do have one-foot freeboard now, but if you weren't in a flood zone, you wouldn't, the way I'm taking this, you would not be able to attach a freeboard to it. And I'm curious, I'm just surprised that the insurance companies haven't just, hasn't been a huge backlash at this point. And I'm wondering if we will even be able to get flood insurance for those properties that are not in a flood zone, because I don't think the insurance companies are going to want to insure something and they feel pretty sure it's going to flood in a certain amount of time. So it just take, I think it's just, Mayor, it's a huge amount of discussion and possibly between the towns that we could do a countywide discussion instead of just town by town. Have a lot more presence that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay. Yeah, I posed a question back. Has the home builders or realtors talked about hosting a forum of stakeholders as well on this?
We can actually have a legislative committee meeting this week with the realtors and the next week with the home builders, and we're going to be discussing just that.
Okay. Well, I think there would be interest in collaborating to do this, because obviously there's lots of conversations that are needed on this topic. And I do think both of you touched on getting input from, you know, insurance folks. Okay, anything else before we adjourn? All right, next meeting will be on a Tuesday. It is a different night. It's Tuesday, January 24th. We had to make a schedule change, which was on the consent agenda, but just so you know that that is an odd night for us, but we will be meeting on a Tuesday. So with that, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Willow.